Hello everyone and welcome to this Federalist Society virtual event. My name is Marco J. Lloyd and I'm Assistant Director of Practice Groups for the Federalist Society. Today, we're excited to host a Courthouse Steps oral argument on Oklahoma Statewide Charter School Board v. Drummond, featuring Phil Sekler. Phil serves as Senior Counsel at Alliance Defending Freedom, refocuses on academic and religious freedom. Before joining ADF, he had a long career in private practice with substantial first-chair trial experience in courts around the country on a variety of complex litigation matters, including as a partner at Williams &amp; Connolly. In 2013, he took a break from law practice to become a distinguished visitor from practice at Penn State Law School. He also taught at the Antonin Scalia School of Law at George Mason University and at the Georgetown University Law Center, where he continues to teach a course on professional responsibility. Our moderator today is Professor Michael Moreland, who is Chair of the Religious Liberties Practice Group, University Professor of Law and Religion, and Director of the Eleanor H. McCullin Center for Law, Religion, and Public Policy at Villanova University. If you'd like to learn more about today's speakers, their full bios can be viewed on our website, fedsoc.org. If you have a question at any point in today's program, please enter it into the Q&amp;A function at the bottom of your Zoom window. We will do our best to answer as many as we can. Finally, I'll note that, as always, the Federalist Society takes no position on particular legal or public policy issues, and all expressions of opinion are those of the speakers. With that, thank you both for joining us today, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Marco, and thank you to the Federalist Society, as always, for sponsoring these programs. So this is a series called Courthouse Steps, which is a post-oral argument program to talk about what happened yesterday at the Supreme Court in this case involving Oklahoma Charter Schools, St. Isidore's and the Oklahoma Attorney General. So, Phil, maybe some folks on the call are probably very familiar with this case, maybe listened to the oral argument. Some people maybe have been following this case all along, but many, I'm sure, are new to it. So maybe you could just give us a brief summary of the issues in the case, how the litigation has proceeded up to this point, and what the primary issues were in front of the Supreme Court yesterday.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Professor Moreland. So, the case concerns the Oklahoma Charter Schools Act, which is a program that is important in Oklahoma in terms of providing educational alternatives to students. Oklahoma right now ranks 49th in the country in terms of educational outcomes. So the charter school program has been really viewed as an important program to have private groups come in and offer different kinds of learning. In fact, there are schools, charter schools, that focus on Native American culture, environmental stewardship, language immersion. There are a lot of different focuses that are offered to students in Oklahoma. The problem is, although the charter school program broadly invites private organizations to come in and run charter schools, it categorically excludes religious applicants from the program in the view that religion is the wrong kind of diversity. In June 2023, the statewide charter school board approved St. Isidore Virtual Catholic School to be the eighth charter, virtual charter, and there are more than 30 charter schools in Oklahoma, but there are seven now, but St. Isidore would have been the eighth. And it's clearly a Catholic school. It was a program devised by the Archdiocese of Oklahoma City and the Diocese of Tulsa. The corporation was formed by the Archbishop and the Bishop. The board was privately appointed. They applied to operate a charter school, and the statewide charter school board approves St. Isidore, despite that non-sectarian requirement I referred to. And they did that because the prior attorney general in Oklahoma concluded that that non-sectarian requirement was likely constitutional and should not be enforced. And he made that conclusion because of the free exercise trilogy, starting with the Trinity Lutheran case in 2017 and going through Carson versus Macon. And basically, he made clear in his opinion, and this was the formal opinion he issued to the board, that when the government opens up a program, like the Charter School Act, or I'm sorry, the Charter School Program, to private organizations, it cannot then say, "But if you're religious, don't apply." Because what that does is it basically says there's a condition on participation. That condition is relinquishing your religious beliefs, and that's unconstitutional. It violates the free exercise clause. And so the board approved St. Isidore based on the advice it received. But a new attorney general took office. That attorney general disagreed with the prior attorney general's view. And four days after the St. Isidore contract was signed, the attorney general sued directly in the Oklahoma Supreme Court, and he sued the statewide charter school board seeking to nullify the contract. And St. Isidore then intervened. The litigation proceeded originally in the Oklahoma Supreme Court as a matter of original jurisdiction. And in June of 20, or July of 2024, the Oklahoma Supreme Court agreed with the attorney general. And it kind of recognized this free exercise trilogy that the former attorney general concluded applied, but it held that those cases didn't matter because St. Isidore, this entity founded by the Archbishop of Oklahoma City and the Bishop of Tulsa, would in fact be a government entity, an arm of the state, and also possibly engaged in state action. And so therefore, it had no free exercise rights. So we petitioned to the Supreme Court for a review of that ruling, and thankfully, the Supreme Court took the case. So the issues, I would say there are five main issues that the court was considering. The first is, of course, the principle in the free exercise trilogy that has been emphasized again and again, that you cannot open up a program to private applicants and then categorically exclude religious applicants. And in each of the three cases in the trilogy, the Supreme Court said that kind of religious discrimination is odious to the Constitution. Second, but of course relatedly, when you have a statute like the Oklahoma statute that expressly targets religion, it is subject to strict scrutiny. And so, and of course, it needs a compelling interest. So third, the Supreme Court's made it clear that a state's interest in separating religion more fiercely than the Establishment Clause requires is not sufficient. It will not satisfy strict scrutiny. Fourth question then is, well, is there an Establishment Clause problem with respect to charter schools? And of course, these are schools that no one is required to attend. They are an option. The charter school program, the way the board applied it, is entirely neutral toward religion. It doesn't favor religion. It's not hostile to religion. And any money that a charter school receives under the program is based on the students who choose to attend. If no students would attend a charter school, the charter school will receive zero money. And that was clear in the record before the Supreme Court. So in the fifth issue is this argument that the Oklahoma Supreme Court, I guess, accepted, which is, well, St. Isidore is a government entity or a state actor, and therefore has no free exercise rights. So hopefully, Professor, that's a good statement of the issues and a background of the case.
Yes, thank you, Phil. And again, if people have questions as we go through this discussion, please do use the Q&amp;A function at the bottom. We'll get to as many as we can after we debrief a bit here about the oral argument. So yesterday at the Supreme Court, the petitioners had, as it were, three bites at the apple. They had three advocates arguing on their side. First-year colleague Jim Campbell from Alliance Defending Freedom, representing the charter school board, and then Mike McGinley from Deccart arguing on behalf of St. Isidore's Catholic Charter School. Then the newly confirmed Solicitor General John Sauer, in what I believe is his first oral argument as Solicitor General, argued on behalf of the United States in favor of St. Isidore's. And then, excuse me, finally Greg Gahr, also a former Solicitor General of the United States, argued defending the position of the Oklahoma Attorney General. So without going through each of those in turn, maybe you just take the petitioner's side with Jim Campbell, Mike McGinley, and John Sauer's arguments, and just talk a little bit about the issues that were most present in the questioning on the petitioner's side. Anything that surprised you, what you thought were the hardest questions? Maybe some questions that you thought were maybe easier to resolve? So start with the petitioner's side.
Yeah, so on the petitioner's side, I thought the theme of the argument and kind of the questions for most of the justices was that charter schools are formed to be an alternative to government-run schools. That's the whole point. And this idea that they're government actors, they're government entities, is kind of at odds with the whole purpose of the school. In fact, at one point, Justice Alito said, well, you know, under the respondent's view, what would be the point of a charter school if it was just a government entity, government-run school? So I thought the questioning really reflected that. Also, it seemed to me that a number, that most of the justices totally see this case as in sync with and governed by the free exercise trilogy of Trinity Lutheran, Espinoza, and Carson versus Macon. So, you know, there were some questions of our side as to whether or not this case fits into those. But, you know, Justice Alito again asked, well, this case involves a contract. Is that any kind of meaningful difference from the benefits that were at issue in the trilogy? And of course, the answer to that is no. So we did get some hard questions, I would say, from justices Sotomayor, Kagan, and Jackson. But interestingly, almost all of their questions dealt with the downstream effects of a ruling for petitioners, and they were not based in doctrine. So if you think about doctrinally how one might rule against our position and just don't apply the free exercise clause to this situation. One, of course, would be St. Isidore, because it's a charter school, is a government entity. But again, it's privately owned and be privately operated. In fact, the dispositive fact on that is that St. Isidore is controlled by a private board. That private board is the governing body of the school. All the employees report up to that board, and that board reports to nobody in the government. And it's not appointed by anybody in the government. So that board is a private board. The institution's clearly privately controlled. The respondent relied on regulations and oversight. And if even a high degree of regulation and oversight is enough to convert a private entity into a state, an arm of the state, then that's kind of a scary proposition. So that didn't seem to be going anywhere. In fact, at one point, Justice Sotomayor actually said, well, let's talk about state action. The issue is in whether or not St. Isidore is a government entity. The state action question also was not really largely focused on by the other side even. This lower court had relied on two state action tests, the public function and entwinement. And entwinement test was kind of given up by respondents, and they didn't really argue too much about public function either. We can talk more about this, and I'm probably getting too far in the weeds for your question, Professor. So then the third way that you might, so if you say government entity isn't really a route, state action isn't a route, then really the only way you disregard the free exercise cases that we talked about is if public schools somehow are different. Public schools under state law and somehow have their own constitutional category. And, you know, there really is no doctrinal basis for that. Justice Gorsuch asked about that. You know, he pressed for some test that would that would somehow justify treating a contract held by a private organization to operate a school like St. Isidore differently than all of the other contracting situations. And I don't think he ever really got a satisfying test.
I thought maybe spend a little bit more time on some of the challenging, the questions that were posed from the perspective presumably most hostile to the petitioners from justices Sotomayor, Kagan, and Jackson. So a couple of things. One, I remember Justice Kagan a few times, and I think also Justice Sotomayor a few times, pushed on these points about kind of curricular oversight. What's the curriculum in these religious charter schools? If St. Isidore's prevails, could you set up a charter school that would say, how could they, would they have their own ability to determine the science curriculum? Things like that. But a lot of issues about curriculum and oversight by the state charter school board and how that is, in their view, inconsistent with what normally we would think of as a private school's ability to determine its own curriculum. So maybe a few comments about that, if you would?
Yeah, so there were two reasons why they asked those questions. The first had to do with this issue of control and whether the control was so severe that in fact, a privately operated charter school becomes an arm of the state. And so what is the degree of oversight the state has in the curriculum? Well, the fact is that it's a very limited review of the curriculum that the state does, especially when it comes to the focus subjects of a charter school. The state does want to make sure the state's standards are met, but it doesn't look at whether the language immersion or the Native American culture or the environmental stewardship or any aspect that's unique to that school and how that's wrong. That isn't what they do. They receive an overview of the curriculum, and then there are certain state standards in terms of ABCs, math, and other subjects. They have to be met. But importantly, the decision-making of the curriculum is entirely in the hands of the privately operated school. They're the ones who determine it, and yes, there's oversight, but that doesn't make St. Isidore an arm of the state. So that's number one. Number two, there were also questions about, again, downstream consequences. What would we do if a charter school didn't want to teach the state-required curriculum? So to the extent the state requires that evolution be taught, could a charter school say, "We don't want to teach that. We want to teach creationism?" And then Justice Kagan asked, "How is that kind of issue any different from a school like St. Isidore saying, 'Look, we want to strike the non-sectarian prohibition' or requirement?" So and the answer to that is, I think, pretty clear and easy because the non-sectarian requirement expressly targets religion. It is facial religious discrimination, subject to strict scrutiny, and it requires a compelling state interest, which the Supreme Court has already said in the trilogy, isn't sufficed by a desire to have a separation of religion more fierce than the Establishment Clause requires. But these requirements for certain subjects to be taught or certain standards, things like that, those are neutral, or at least that would be the starting point. Is it neutral? Is it generally applicable? And if it is, you're governed by Smith. And then, as Justice Gorsuch pointed out, even if Smith doesn't govern, the state would have a different interest than the interest that the state of Oklahoma is asserting in this case. And that interest would be, we want to make sure our kids, you know, are proficient in math, English, and that kind of thing. So it's a much different question. So those downstream questions, and there were a lot of those, are just a whole different issue than the issue that was before the court.
One other question about the questioning that came from Justices Jackson, Sotomayor, and Kagan. I thought at some points it seemed like, maybe with all due respect, they were fighting the last war, that they, Justice Sotomayor dissented in, actually, in all three of the free exercise trilogy. Justice Kagan dissented in Espinoza and in Carson. And at one point, it was interesting, I thought, and get your reaction to this. So Justice Jackson pushed on this question of, well, the public benefit here is different because the "public benefit" here is Oklahoma establishing a system of secular public schools. And that St. Isidore comes and says, "We want to participate in that public benefit, but we want to make it a religious public school." It struck me that means that she disagrees with Carson versus Macon. She wasn't on the court at the time. But it did strike me that in some ways, there's still a resistance there, understandably from their standpoint, I suppose, to that trilogy. So maybe if you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, that was an interesting exchange there, Michael, and thanks for bringing that up. And just to unpack that a little more for the audience. She basically said that St. Isidore is trying to get something different from other applicants, and therefore, and it shouldn't. And the fact that it can't isn't a free exercise problem because the benefit, as you said, that's being offered is a secular program, and St. Isidore wants to strike the word "secular." And she actually compared that to a situation like Trinity Lutheran, where the benefit being offered was money for resurfacing playgrounds. And the applicant says, "Well, we want the money, but we don't want a playground. We want to buy bibles." And, you know, like a clear, literally a different situation. And those, I mean, obviously, it's apples and oranges. St. Isidore wants exactly what's offered to everyone else. It wants to be treated like everyone else. And in the Carson case, Maine argued that, look, what, exactly what she said. What we are providing here is a free public education to those residents in Maine who don't have access to a high school in their districts. And so that's the benefit. And the Supreme Court rejected that, saying, "Look, that is just semantics. You cannot include the challenged condition, which is it has to be secular, as part of the description of the benefit," to get her out of the argument. That doesn't work. And that's exactly what Justice Jackson was suggesting. She did also say that she needed to go back and read Carson. So hopefully, after she reads it, she'll realize that, yeah, that ship has kind of sailed.
Right, and even, I was thinking, even, I suppose, from a certain perspective, there's still resistance even to Zelman, right? And a view about the Establishment Clause, maybe, that has now been rejected for 25-plus years, but probably still holds some sway with some members of the court. Well, maybe, now, just talk a little bit more. It does get quite technical very quickly, but this state action question, which was the focus of a lot of questions, actually from across the bench. Maybe talk a little bit more about some of the issues that arose there, both not just from petitioner's side, but also now for the respondent's side, and what you thought were some of the main themes from that questioning that came out.
Yeah, so the key, so there are two different kinds of state action. One is if the entity is actually an arm of the state, it's part of the government. And the second is if it's a private entity. So with respect to whether or not privately operated charter school should be regarded as an arm of the state, there, the Supreme Court's been clear that that kind of comes, rests on creation and control. Did the state create the entity? Does the state control it? And we think on both of those issues, the answer is a resounding no. St. Isidore, as I said, was created privately by two Catholic Diocese, and then it applied to be part of this program. So the way that the respondent was arguing about creation, it basically, Mr. Gahr was basically saying that it's created because the state essentially authorizes the school to operate, almost like getting a license. And that doesn't create it. It didn't give rise to the existence. And in fact, the statute, Section 3-137K, makes it clear that even when your contract, if it's terminated, the school still exists. It's not existing only because of the contract, although the contract, of course, allows it to operate as a charter school. So the fact that it has this authority to operate really doesn't constitute creation. And then on the control point, as I said earlier, their argument is essentially it's controlled by the state because it's subject to extensive oversight. And, you know, there are a number of cases, including a case out of Pennsylvania involving a public utility and a case involving nursing homes, both of which are subject to incredible governmental oversight. And those situations did not cause the private actor to become part of the government. So it would be a scary proposition that you could regulate yourself into being an arm of the state. So that's why I think that ultimately, even Justice Sotomayor was kind of pushing Mr. Gahr into talking more about the state action issue. And one other interesting thing, Michael, and that is that at one point, the chief said that he didn't really even understand this idea, the argument that respondent was making about creation and control. That is the other side. Because the benefits in Trinity Lutheran and in Espinoza and in Carson versus Macon were all created by the government. So it seemed like the chief was saying, "Look, even apart from the government entity, you have a program that's open to private groups." As Justice Kavanaugh said, it's basically an all-comers policy in terms of the charter school program and people who want to apply. And then you can't say, you know, exclude the religious. So it seems like the chief is just looking at that aspect of the program itself and saying it's a free exercise violation regardless of the government entity analysis. But then again, the government entity analysis is very weak, as I said. So then turning to the other half of that, you have state action. And state action is a doctrine where typically it's a basis to tag a private entity with constitutional obligations. And there are a number of tests in the state action arena that courts have used, and the court below used two of them. One was whether or not the function being provided was a traditionally exclusive public function. And the second is whether or not there's such entwinement of the government in this entity that it should be regarded as a governmental actor for purposes of the action being challenged. So with respect to public function, there's a case called Rendell Baker out of New York Supreme Court case, which made it clear that a school that was almost entirely funded by the state under a contract with the state for the education of maladjusted children was not a state actor. And I think that that case, Rendell Baker, pretty much forecloses the public function argument. And it really wasn't even mentioned by the Attorney General's counsel yesterday. And on entwinement, as I said, they didn't mention that at all, even in the reply brief. So it seems like that is something they're not really pushing. And that's because entwinement, if you look at the only case that ever held entwinement, that's Brentwood Academy case, the Supreme Court, and there, like 86% of the members of this organization were public officials. And then they appointed public officials to control and run the organization, which, as General Sauer said yesterday, that's like the polar opposite of our case. We have a completely private entity that was privately created and is privately controlled. So entwinement doesn't really work. So the main argument that respondent was pushing yesterday on state action comes from a case called West versus Atkins, which involved a doctor in a prison who is being sued under the prisoner's Eighth Amendment rights to avoid cruel and unusual punishment because the medical care wasn't appropriate. And the court held that in that case, the doctor could be viewed as a state actor for purposes of the Eighth Amendment challenge because these inmates who are in prison had no option. And so the state couldn't outsource its constitutional obligation to provide adequate medical care by just hiring private doctors. So the argument made by respondent is, well, we have the same thing in Oklahoma. The state of Oklahoma is essentially outsourcing its duty under state law to educate children to private groups. So, I mean, of course, that argument recognizes that St. Isidore is private, which it is. But there are two problems with it. First of all, as you can probably see just from my description of the situation, there's no outsourcing. Oklahoma continues to run its government-run schools. And anyone who might think about going to a charter school, of course, has the option to go into any of the government-run schools available in Oklahoma. So that's the first way to dismiss it. The second is that in Rendell Baker itself, which I talked about previously, that school was operating to provide education to kids that New York State had a duty under state law to educate. And there, there was a dissent in that case. And I think it was Justice Marshall. And Justice Marshall dissented, saying, "Hey, this state action document should be a good one. We should find this school to be a state actor because they're doing what state law requires the state to do. The state is delegating that to the school." And the majority of the Supreme Court rejected that argument, saying that the fact that there was a state law duty isn't enough. And then they, of course, they looked at whether or not education is a traditionally exclusive public function, which it's not, and so they rejected it. So because there's no complete outsourcing, and because Rendell Baker held that, look, just the fact that state law alone creates an obligation, that's not enough. And so I don't think really the cards are there for there to be any kind of opinion that there's state action under West versus Atkins, which of all the arguments that responded in advance yesterday on state action, as weak as it is, it was the strongest one.
Also, Phil, if you could comment a little bit about some questions that came up, and there was, especially, it was a point of argument that Greg Gahr made on behalf of the respondent here a few times, that the effect of a ruling here in favor of St. Isidore's would have, would create a lot of turmoil in the charter school system across the country, that lots of states, that charter schools can't be That uh lots of states, uh, the charter schools are, can't be religious in 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 the states. And that uh if Saint Isidore's prevails, that it will upset the apple cart with regard to how charter schools are structured and governed. Um, and whether or not this is a case that's particular to the way Oklahoma uh. Creates and oversees charter schools, but will it have knock-on effects in other states as well? So if you have any thoughts about that.
Yeah. So the respondent's argument is that a ruling for Saint Isidore for petitioners. Uh, in the case argued yesterday, would essentially declare unconstitutional the laws of forty seven states. And the federal charter schools program. Because all of those laws do have a prohibition on religious programs and operations. Um, but that's not true, because as you just pointed out, each charter program is different. And and there are certain programs where there is more um governmental involvement. In the operation of the actual school. You don't have a privately operated board, like Saint Isidore's board, calling all the shots. And so in each state, you have to look and see how that state's state uh charter school program is run. To determine whether or not um it's similar to Oklahoma in terms of inviting private entities in to operate the program. Because that's what gives rise to the free exercise problem, is inviting private actors in but excluding religious ones. And that is what Justice Kavanaugh said in probably, I think, the most memorable moment of yesterday. Uh, he'd call it rank discrimination. Against religion, when you invite up private groups but exclude religious groups. So number one, not all states operate the same way. And Justice Gorsuch said expressly, uh, so you know, this is, may affect some. But it may affect, may not affect others in terms of a ruling for petitioners and the effect it would have on different states. Um, and in fact, uh, when respondent made the argument about the effect on states. Uh, Justice Kavanaugh said the only direct effect will be an expansion. Of all the charter school programs across the country. So um, which is absolutely true. I mean, that's the first most immediate effect is that you will have applicants. Religious applicants able to apply um in states where private actors are invited. Um, and and I finally, I guess I would say, Michael, that even in states that are like Oklahoma and in Oklahoma itself. You know, a state can design its program the way it wants. And if it wants to do something uh where it controls, the government is actually in charge, it can design it that way. But when it invites private actors into the program, it cannot categorically disqualify religious groups.
And then there are trade-offs, I suppose, of you have more government control, but then less autonomy or entrepreneurship in the charter school. Uh, the design of the charter school program. And I think that even some, someone mentioned that at that argument yesterday. Um, uh, I I do want to be sure we are already about halfway through our allocated hour. So I want to be sure we get some questions from the audience in, so I'll sprinkle a few in here. Uh, so one question, what possible effect could the court's decision have on the IDEA case, which I think was argued earlier? Uh, and lunch programs for students at charter schools discuss effects of state action versus private schools?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, the lunch program, I don't know what uh, what effect that would have. I mean, again, if charter schools, including Saint Isidore, are, you know. Expected to comply with the terms of the charter school program. And so that those terms are set, um, and and that's part of the process, the application process. And you know, Justice Kagan did suggest that some schools, not Saint Isidore, they've, you know, signed a contract. They're going to comply with the elements of the program. But if there was a group that wanted to apply but didn't want to comply with all of the elements. And it was a neutral, generally applicable element, then you'd have a different analysis. Um, and and the court would have to go through that. And and ask, among other things, whether there's a, you know, maybe that condition was actually targeted at religion. But if it wasn't, then it would be a Smith analysis.
Uh, here's another audience uh question from the audience, but it uh, it it came up a lot in um. In oral argument, uh, at least a few times, as I recall. So a person asked, how will the ministerial exception apply to teachers and administrators at the charter school? Say a teacher hired by the school is fired, uh, with the school claim protection under the ministerial exception? Would the church autonomy doctrine apply here? Uh, so the uh, this issue about uh, would a charters, if Saint Isidore's prevails, will, would it have still the protection? Uh, and exceptions for the ministerial exception applicable to it with regard to uh decisions about faculty?
Yeah. First of all, as I think my colleague pointed out yesterday, Saint Isidore's handbook makes it clear that they do not require teachers to be Catholic. Um, in Saint Isidore. Uh, but I suppose you would, but they did in their contract, which Justice Jackson asked about. Uh, make it clear that they will comply with all applicable law. And that's the law that governs, including the law that gives them religious protections like the ministerial exception. So they acknowledge that in the contract. Uh, I'm not sure, given the handbook, it it matters much. And in fact, it's just a constitutional truism. I mean, and then really like, and that's what uh, Mr. McGinley said for Saint Isidore yesterday. That essentially Saint Isidore does have those religious protections uh by virtue of the Constitution. And so to the extent those are implicated, um, it would expect that those would be recognized.
This is a good uh Fed Courts type question here from someone. And I've, I've, a lot of people have been speculating on it since the Oklahoma Supreme Court's decision came down. So uh, our audience member asked, right or wrong? Why isn't the Oklahoma Supreme Court's ruling on state law, that is, whether the school is a state actor? Binding on the Supreme Court of the United States?
That is a great question. Um, and the answer is because it's not a question of state law. What the, the boundary between governmental obligations and individual liberty. In the US Constitution is a matter of US constitutional law. And so, for instance, in the case of Manhattan Community Access versus Halleck, Justice Kavanaugh wrote that the state action doctrine. Is protection and robust sphere of individual liberty. Because it draws that boundary between the government and the private. And so when you're talking about the free exercise clause, you can't have a situation where a state could deprive private actors. Of their free exercise rights by deeming under state law that. An actor is a part of the state. Uh, it has to be a question of federal law because it's a federal constitutional right at issue.
All right. Uh, excuse me, another audience question, does Saint Isidore, and this again, this admissions question came up um. Few times, does Saint Isidore accept every applicant or are they selective? Is an open admission process a condition for funding?
Yes and yes. So yes, Saint Isidore accepts everybody. They are open, they have an open admissions, all comers admissions policy. And one of the terms of the Oklahoma Charter Schools Program is that. That ha- that'd be the policy, that you accept all students in the state. And if you're oversubscribed, you conduct a lottery. And interestingly, uh, General Sauer did say. That with respect to the federal charter schools program, which is a grant program that provides funding to charter schools. There had been a religious affiliate, a non-affiliation requirement. Which after Trinity Lutheran, uh, the Office of Legal Counsel came out with an opinion. Uh, conceding or acknowledging that was unconstitutional. And then just General Sauer yesterday acknowledged that another requirement. And that is a requirement that had been in the federal charter schools program. That operations and programs of charter schools be non-sectarian. And he said that was unconstitutional in light of Espinoza and Carson versus Macon. Um, but he did say that with respect to the final element of the federal charter schools program, which is that. Admissions policies be completely open, all comers accepted. He, he believes that the federal government would defend that, and he said that to the court yesterday.
And and so that, and I, again, I guess it's hypothetical because Saint Isidore's does uh, uh, accept everyone. But if a real, if a charter school wanted to restrict its admissions. Then uh, it would have to go through the Smith type analysis, I guess, about whether or not. That open admissions requirement was a neutral and generally applicable law, is that right?
Yes, and I think that was one of the most interesting parts of yesterday's discussion. Because Justice Kagan really was focused on that. Um, not because Saint Isidore has that policy, they don't. But because she's thinking of the next religious charter school that wants to limit admission to students of the same faith. And she said, wouldn't it just be the same? Wouldn't your argument, Saint Isidore statewide charter school board, be the same? With respect to the non-sectarian requirement as it would to the all comers requirement? And they really are different, as I said at the beginning, because the non-sectarian requirement expressly targets religion. It is facial religious discrimination, subject to strict scrutiny. And all comers requirement is not targeted at religion, it's not facial discrimination. So it would have to be evaluated differently, first to see if there's any underlying evidence of hostility to religion. Or under Smith, whether it's neutral and generally applicable. Another, one other thing, and then Justice Gorsuch said yesterday that even if that kind of a requirement got by Smith. And I'm not sure what he meant by that, like maybe the court's rethinking Smith. But he said, even if it got by Smith, um, the state would have a different interest. Uh, likely a compelling state interest, because its interest would be in making sure that all students have access to charter school options. Which is a much different interest than the anti-establishment interest that the state of Oklahoma is asserting here.
Another audience question, um, how does Fulton versus City of Philadelphia apply? And why isn't it part of the trilogy Trinity Lutheran, Espinoza, Carson of religious liberty cases? It was interesting though, that uh Fulton, which, and you can speak to why, why we don't often categorize it as part of that trilogy. But it was interesting the ways in which uh Fulton did pop up in the or- oral argument a few times.
Yeah, so Fulton didn't involve a benefit that was expressly made unavailable to religious groups. Um, but it did involve a, a requirement of a program. That was not neutral or generally uh applicable or available. But it did come up yesterday because it involves a adoption agency. That is a contractor. And so under the argument made by the Attorney General yesterday. If the operator of Saint Isidore becomes a arm of the state and loses its free exercise rights. Because it enters a contract with the state to educate children. Then why isn't the same true with respect to operators of foster care agencies, adoption agencies, homeless shelters, soup kitchens? Um, so the chief brought that up, like what do you do about Fulton? You know, under your theory, Mr. Gar, that Saint Isidore is a state actor. Because then the adoption agency in, in Fulton wouldn't have any free exercise rights. And so that was obviously a very good question for us, because the court sees the downstream impact of a ruling. Affirming the Oklahoma Supreme Court, which is that faith-based providers of services to states. Could lose their free exercise rights and be labeled an arm of the state, be labeled, you know, a state actor for purposes of state law. And thereby not be able to continue to provide those services.
Again, uh, keep the questions coming, uh, this is uh gr- uh, great for our discussion. Uh, why was Justice Barrett recused and what happens if the court ties four-four, someone asks?
Yeah, so we don't know why Justice Barrett was recused, um, she didn't say. But we do know that if the court is four-four, uh, then the lower court's opinion remains, does not get reversed.
Uh, someone asked, why did they, I think they're talking about West here, uh, why did they sue the doctor and not the prison in that state action case?
Um, no, I think that's a federal courts question, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
So that, I, I think that probably has more to do with the immunity issues.
Right. Um, what is the appropriate test for determining when a private entity is transformed? From merely a contractor into a state actor? Is it LeBron, as Justice Scorch suggested, and you touched on this a little bit earlier, but maybe just to talk about it a bit more about. How does a, how does a contractor become a state actor? What, what process?
So if you're talking about state actor by reference to a private entity. Then the state has to do more than just approve, oversee and regulate. It has to actually either coerce or substantially uh motivate the conduct or the action being taken. Um, and so in that regard, that's involving the conduct at issue. So here, of course, the conduct at issue is Saint Isidore's religious character. The state had nothing to do with that whatsoever. In fact, state law as currently written forbids it. And so certainly, you can't say that the conduct that's being challenged of Saint Isidore is somehow attributable to the state. It's the furthest thing from being attributable to the state. So, but LeBron is a different analysis. That is when a private entity could be deemed to actually be part of the state. So I guess it wouldn't even be a private entity, it's a state government entity. And there LeBron dealt with Amtrak, where the court held that Amtrak, even though Congress said it was a private entity. Deemed it to be a state actor after finding that the state had act, or the US government in that case. Had actually created it and controlled it. And again, those two elements, creation, control are dispositive. And both of those were satisfied in LeBron. You have, you were created by a special statute that says you are hereby in existence, which didn't happen for Saint Isidore. And then you are actually controlled by the government, that is the decision-making that is being made on a daily, daily basis. Is made by government officials, not by private people. Um, and that's, in that situation, uh, an entity like Amtrak is part of the government.
Question that came up here, uh, can't religious instruction and secular instruction be separated? So that the state does not subsidize religious instruction?
So the state always, and you know, that's a great point, Michael. You know, the Supreme Court in every one of the cases in the trilogy made it clear that the states have an option to provide whatever programs they want. And if the state wants to just provide secular instruction in government-run schools, it can do that. But what it can't, and and so with respect to the playground resurfacing. The educational benefits at issue in Espinoza and Carson versus Macon. The state always has an option not to provide those benefits to anybody. But once it decides to open those benefits up to private groups, um, private schools, private applicants, whatever the benefit happens to be. You can't then say, but if you're religious, don't bother. Because as I said, what that does is it places a condition on participation. A condition that you give up your religion if you want to participate in otherwise available benefit. And that is what is owed is to our constitution.
A question asks, what could be learned from oral argument about Chief Justice Roberts' view of the case?
So I, as I said before, I think the chief um was asking some good questions. But again, totally aligned with the understanding that this case is governed by the trilogy. Um, in fact, he asked, as I said, why creation and control even matters? Because the benefits at issue in Trinity Lutheran, Espinoza and Carson versus Macon. Were all created and controlled by the government. And so I think the way the chief sees this is kind of what Justice Kavanaugh said as well. You can't open up a program to private groups, invite everybody in. We can do all of it, except, wait, we can't do religion. Everything else, everybody else come on in the door.
Um, question here, uh, will a ruling reversing the Oklahoma Supreme Court effectively nullify? Blaine amendments in the other states that have them? So this discussion of Blaine amendments actually also came up uh in the trilogy. Uh, but maybe you could speak to the effect of these Blaine amendments in in the states and and the, the legal consequence of a ruling in favor of Saint Isidore here?
Yeah, I don't think it necessarily nullifies the amendments to various state constitutions entirely. Because you can interpret those const- uh, amendments in many different ways. And in fact, even in Oklahoma, uh, which the Oklahoma Supreme Court, they relied on one of the amendments to strike down Saint Isidore. But before that ruling, they had actually held that when a, the state receives a benefit. In exchange, wh- when the state provides funding to a religious group. In exchange for a benefit to the state, like educating children, that is not a violation of that state constitutional amendment. That is simply, because it's not aid, it is simply a quid pro quo. And so the court kind of reject, I mean, for disregarded that interpretation. And so the court kind of reject, I mean, disregarded that interpretation of its amendment when it came to St. Isidore. But there was really solid law in Oklahoma before St. Isidore that it really wasn't a problem. So I think it's going to have to, it's going to cause these amendments to be reconsidered so they can't be used to violate free exercise rights.
One issue that it maybe, it came up maybe a little bit yesterday. I don't remember it being a particular focus of discussion, but in the run up to this, there's been some discussion about the ways in which Zelman back in two thousand and two puts a lot of emphasis on the ways in which the independent choices of parents to take a voucher and then use it at a range of possible options, including religious schools, that that obviates any establishment clause problem. And so some of the skeptics here, the opponents of St. Isidore's have said, well, but in this case, you have direct funding, that you don't have that layer of independent choice that cuts off the establishment clause problems. Any any reaction to that and ways in which that maybe came up yesterday at oral argument?
Yeah, so Carson versus Macon involved direct funding. So if you read that case, payments were made directly to the the schools. But again, only as a consequence of parents making the decision. So it really is irrelevant whether or not the hands of the parents touch the money. And of course, as our society and our technology becomes more automated, probably it won't be the case that you can actually get a voucher in your hand and everything's going to be transferred electronically. But the key is whether or not the decision of the parents is what results in the funding. And and the record is undisputed in the case before, in the St. Isidore situation, that every dollar that this St. Isidore gets or receives from the state, and of course, they can raise their own private money too. But every month, every dollar they get from the state is attributed to solely the choice of a parent or a student to go to that school. And and so under Carson, after Carson, the fact that it's paid directly from the state to the school is insignificant.
I think we're mostly out of questions from the audience. Maybe I'll turn it over to you, Phil, if you have any concluding thoughts, reactions. To make predictions, but.
Well, let me ask you two, so two things I think we should talk about, just because they're interesting for people who didn't get a chance to hear the argument. The first was Justice Sotomayor's hypothetical, involving the painting of murals of landscapes.
Yes, she basically explained that, yeah, that was.
Yeah, so she basically asked, you know, whether or not the government could commission a painter to paint murals of landscapes, but exclude religious symbolism in those landscapes, because it wants a secular landscape. And then Justice Jackson actually repeated the same hypothetical, because apparently she liked it. And it's such a different hypothetical, because it involves government speech, the government actually commissioning somebody to write or paint its own message. And so, of course, the government can do what it wants. And in the charter school situation like Oklahoma's, private actors come in, operate schools, have their own speech, their own approach. They're entirely autonomous into designing the curriculum and everything that happens, essentially. So the analogy is like night and day. And at one point, when my colleague was saying, look, Justice Jackson, that's about speech. She said, well, don't, don't worry about the speech, like, but that's the point of the distinction is that the mural hypothetical, it has to be regarded in connection with the government's own speech. So any, before I go to the second kind of anecdote from yesterday, Michael, any comments on that?
No, that seemed, that seemed right. I mean, I guess the point where it was to press on the, you know, is is any kind of religious discrimination triggering some kind of, you know, constitutional scrutiny, even where it would be in that context of of this hypothetical mural? But but I think, as the advocates argued, I think the government's speech answer resolves that pretty quickly.
So the second anecdote that's probably worth pointing out is Justice Alito's statements to Greg Gar about the public statements made by the Attorney General that he believed reflected hostility toward religion. So for instance, in the opinion that the current Attorney General issued withdrawing the former opinion providing advice to the statewide charter school board that the non-sectarian requirement was likely unconstitutional, the current Attorney General said precedent created, quote, precedent created by approval of St. Isidore's application will compel approval of similar applications of all faiths. And then there were a lot of different statements he made publicly that suggested that Oklahomans would not want charter schools of other faiths, including Islam. And so it was, I think, a pretty dramatic moment in the courtroom when Justice Alito asked Greg Gar to explain those statements and and whether or not they reflected hostility toward religion. Mr. Gar basically said, look, they are consistent with what this court has said about religion having a tendency to create strife. But when you read the statements, they're not just talking about reaction, they're talking about specific religions and him being certain that most Oklahomans wouldn't want to support them, which, you know, I think at least Justice Alito felt was pretty hostile.
And he tethered that to the Masterpiece Cake Shop issue, right? Where in the, if in the adjudication of a of a case, you have expressions of anti-religious animus, that itself is a triggering of a free exercise violation.
Exactly. And and that, I mean, it's right. And it only adds to kind of the religious hostility that Oklahoma has, both in connection with the statute that we're challenging and the way it's been enforced in the proceedings below.
Right, well, we are right up against our our time. Maybe we have time for one more question I just saw just popped up. It's an interesting one. Someone asked, is Locke versus Davy, the case saying that the state does not have to fund clergy training, going to rear its head? And this has come up in the free exercise trilogy as well. But if you just speak to Locke versus Davy's effect in this case?
Yeah, so Locke versus Davy involved funding by the state of those training to go into the ministry. And for that particular situation, the court held, there was play in the joints. That is, it's not an establishment clause problem for a state to provide that funding, but the free exercise clause doesn't demand it. So the state can kind of lay off if it wants. So there's a little gap in between the free exercise clause and the establishment clause. But in Carson versus Macon, and I believe also in Espinoza, Locke versus Davy was limited essentially to its facts, essentially to funding going to training of clergy and and nothing else. And so here, of course, there are going to be, this is a neutral program, and the neutral program is going to fund schools. And those schools may involve the employment of clergy. But that's the case even under the benefits that were at issue in Espinoza and Carson versus Macon. So I don't see, nobody really cited Locke versus Davy yesterday. It didn't come up, it seems completely relevant, and it was limited pretty severely by the Supreme Court previously.
Well, we will presumably have an opinion in this case to discuss at the end of June or beginning of July. The Religious Liberties Practice Group has programs coming up the next few weeks, including when this opinion, the other opinions and religious freedom cases come down this summer, so stay tuned for those. In the meantime, thank you, Phil, for so generously sharing your expertise and time with us today. Thanks again to the Federal Society for sponsoring the program. And thanks to all of our attendees and listeners in the future. And with that, we are adjourned.